Let's call the meeting to order at 7:02. Oh, here's my.
Mm hmm.
We don't know where Kathy is. It's but 7:02. We have a quorum. You want to call the meeting to order?
Oh, am I now? I'm chair if Kathy's not here.
I just elected you. Yes, you're.
Well, I think I'm the vice chair. So yes, I it's 7:02 and I'll call the meeting to order. And I will put the agenda over here. Oh, it's on the same thing as the okay. Um, so I want to start with approval of the meeting minutes.
Okay, Margaret, I am here if you guys.
Oh, you are here. Okay, thank you.
No, I just had to make some tea, but thank you for stepping in. I just finished one meeting. Um, just a question. Is there anybody there in person?
Yes.
Yep. Everybody but you and me, Cal.
Oh, okay.
Paul.
Okay, um, so anyway, um, I I'll Margaret, you called the meeting to order and you were asking about the meeting minutes. Mm hmm. Okay.
I move to approve that. I would move to approve as distributed.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Um, Paul?
Paul's not with us.
Oh, okay. Um, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm calling in because I don't have internet. Um, who is there and who is not there? Tommy's there and Ken Ray is there?
Yeah.
Oh, and Paul is not there and Margaret. Okay, so, um, okay, Tommy.
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
And Kathy is aye. Okay, and the next thing on the agenda is the let me put my glasses on. It's the treasures report.
From the treasures report, we have a USPS charge of $66 that needs to be approved that I can sign for. Your absence.
Okay.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Is everyone okay with that?
I move we approve the the we we approve Kansas on the voucher.
Second.
All those in favor? Tommy?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Kathy unanimous, I say vote aye. And okay, so so move, can you can sign it? And then the next thing up is the planners' report.
We also had the annual budget is 39,667. And I think everyone has a copy of the detailed budget.
This is the budget for when?
For 2024.
I don't have it in front of me because I don't have internet, so I apologize if this is a stupid question. So this is for the remainder of the year of the.
Yes. Fiscal 25, sorry.
Okay.
We can. Or open like to me. Mike, we have to go on this this. Go on this night.
I mean, budgets were already supposed to be in, but um, and and nothing's really changing.
Sorry.
Yeah. But so I mean, that's fine to push it off and and get a formal vote in on it. I mean, there were. I don't think board selectmen is going to be voting on budgets until like February, so we're discussing them.
I'd be nice if Paul was here as well on these.
Okay. Yeah, if you want to table it to the next meeting, that's that's you.
Yeah, could we could we move that to the next meeting?
Sure.
Just because I I'd like a chance to and just for my, um, does that include Grace's time?
Portion of your budget does go towards Grace's time, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone have a problem pushing that off to the next meeting?
None at all.
Nope.
So good.
Okay, um, planners' report?
Yeah, I'll I'll be brief. I'm finally getting bids in for the MBTA communities, technical assistance. I got two bids in, so I would suggest to the chair, if you want to put that on for discussion item at our next. At the planning board's next meeting, you know, I I'd be happy to send along those bids. So the planning board can discuss and and provide me some feedback as to who you might want to work with for for consultant for those. Um, and so. Well, and then I think on the agenda tonight, well, the board will be discussing inclusionary zoning bylaw potentially. And solar overlay, so. And then, oh, and then also there's a potential because I'm working with per your last meeting, David Brooks and Lori Woden. We met to discuss the wireless bylaw, so that's that's ongoing. So, uh, you know, we can discuss, the board can discuss. Uh, maybe tonight, maybe at another meeting about pursuing that for town meeting and then. Uh, so I'm I'm mentioning these as all potential town meeting warrants is is why I'm mentioning these. Uh, and then the economic development committee is probably going to make some recommendations to to. Uh, to alter the use table somewhat, uh, you know, sort of similar to what they did suggested last town meeting is to do, just do some some cleanups. Nothing, nothing or shattering. Uh, that's pretty much it, I think. And I think I'd already mentioned some of those the last. Uh, 40B hearings are underway. Next meeting is next Wednesday, the 17th. Um, and I'm continuing to be in the infancy stages of the Housing Works Grant to Extend Sewer and Water. Uh, so I just I just filled out some more paperwork for the state, so that that's ongoing. That's about it.
Any questions at this point for Mr. Planner?
I did have, I sent a question. We we received something in the mail about the Grove Street Bridge. Did you get that one?
I did. I believe that was an agenda item. I tacked on to the end of the meeting, but I can I can address that now if if you'd like through the chair.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, the Grove Street Bridge, they'll be working on creating the pedestrian side of that bridge. And so that'll be going in phases there. So the pedestrians, while they work on the pedestrian side. You know, there will be, I believe, some road closures, but um, parking will still be available for the brewery, obviously, in their own lot. Then they can, uh, you can they can use spill over into uh, the the small amount of parking that Rastine has as well. Directly just crossing the street rather than going next to the street. And then, once that's open, the pedestrian side of it will be open and then the public lots will also be available for spill over. It's just that folks might not be able to, you know, cross the bridge. They'll have to come in from Main Street to use the the public parking. And then use the the then completed pedestrian bridge to walk over to.
That's pretty much what we told them when we they were in the application process.
Yeah.
We were told a few years ago that this was going to be worked on, so that's is part of the plan. So, good.
And I believe they are aware of that, but I'll I'll double check with Joe to make sure that we've touched base with them now.
Okay. Okay, this is being done prior to the work on the to replace the bridge itself?
Prior to the work to when? What? Kathy, what was your question?
I'm sorry, isn't there's a proposal? I mean, there's a this funding to rebuild to replace that bridge, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and is this the pedestrian cross the walkway is the first step?
Oh, yeah, yes, exactly. Sorry. Yeah, the pedestrian bridge, because it'll be separate from the main bridge, that'll be addressed first so that there can be connectivity. Um, and that's that's the way it'll be phased.
Okay, so the road will still be open. It's just the rerouting during this period, correct?
They will still rooting and closing during the construction of the pedestrian bridge as well. But the question Tom had was whether or not that'll impact parking from the brewery. Um, and uh, the answer was in phases, they should still be able to get access. People should be should be able to still get access to the brewery while utilizing other existing parking.
What I remember, uh, Madam Chairperson, was that we told them that was going to happen and they would have to get with the town selectmen or. Uh, the powers that be to use the common area, use the town parking for it.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So Tom, has your question been answered? Or was it have they met with?
Well, it was somebody should be notifying Brian. Is that his name?
Yeah.
Somebody should tell Brian that the time has come and the bridge is going to be worked on and he has to abide by. What we told him was to contact the town for any spill over on his parking. If he's going to have a large event, if he's planning to have any kind of a. More people than usual and he needs more parking, he would have to contact the town.
Okay.
Just a heads up for him.
So, Michael, you'll 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 your team will do that?
Yes, I'm sorry. We're just we're listening to some laps happen upstairs in the gym. Uh, yeah, I'll I'll get together with Joe and and make sure that that's that's all done.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Michael at this point? Alrighty, um, agenda items. Um, first thing on the agenda is review the 2023 annual report. Um, I did review it. Um, I guess the first person to look at it was Paul, um, and he had a comment. Um, I did not have any other comments from the report that was amended from, you know, that had Paul's change in it. Did anyone else have any questions on the annual report, changes on the annual report?
No, no.
Okay, and on behalf of the chair, who I think typically writes this, I do want to thank Grace. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, you did an excellent job and I really appreciate it. Um, so do we need to take a vote on this?
Probably it would it would probably, yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion to annual report?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, um, who who is taking minutes? Grace, are you taking minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, because our our as the as Paul calls it, the scribbler is not here. Um, okay, so so moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, Tommy?
E aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Margaret? Margaret?
Margaret, you're off. You're on mute. Margaret, you're muted.
She. Aye, if you know her head.
Aye, aye. Sorry.
Something like that, okay, and I will vote aye, so it is unanimous. Um, the next thing on the agenda is schedule a public hearing, major site modifications, Kiwanis Upper Parking Lot. Located off Kiwanis Beach Road and Sider Mill Lane. So, Michael, do you want to give us a quick update on what's going on there?
Yeah, so um, on your obviously on your agenda tonight is the scheduling of the public hearing for receiving the applications. Uh, so we'll we'll take it one by one, but uh, this one is for the application submitted by. Uh, Recreation Commission, we have Maria, um, the rec director is on with us tonight. Um, should there be any questions about that application, but this application was submitted. Uh, you know, as the as the board's aware, you had discussion on this back in October, I think it was. Um, there was a request to uh, readdress the the conditions that are imposed on the 2016 site plan approval for Point of Speech. Lower or upper parking lot, I forget which one, but parking lot. Um, and so there are conditions imposed at that time, and so the rec committee would like to revisit those those conditions. Um, so you have an application for site plan slash major modification of site plan. Um, before you tonight, um, and so it's it's our understanding that the board. And it's typical practice, holds the initial meeting to do the administrative work of in regards to receiving a new site plan application. In which you would, uh, as the board deem it, uh, either complete or not complete and address potential waivers at that time. Um, uh, and and things of that nature. So. I don't know how how would the board like to proceed? I guess I may through the chair, I defer to 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 Mr. Davidson on on how this is typically approached.
Okay, um, just a a request, and then I'm going to ask Tommy to be aye for me. Um, can we talk about the the both of the. Simultaneously, need to talk about them separately because they're both related and I think I'd be good for them to move. You know, in tandem with one another. Is that does that make sense to people?
I would suggest that that's up to the board, how you want to handle that. Um, you have two separate applications. Um, so ultimately, at the end of each process, you should have two separate votes. Um, so as of right now, so as far as.
But we can we can open them at the same time and then how.
Yes.
Yeah. So Maria, do you have anything you want to say on these or?
Hi, yeah, I don't know if I have anything new from the last meeting. Um, really, our our ask is the same, which is to match up the approvals of the. Recreation reservations that are approved through DPW and Recreation to match the upper parking lot. Time timelines for opening and closing that. Um, so that is really the the basis of our our ask, and that's what we brought up last time. Um, and it's the same.
So through the chair again, Mike, it's an Alstom Planner Director, Land Use Inspection Services. I forgot to identify myself. I know we got other folks in the room. Um, my last meetings have been very, it's just board members. Uh, the, um, so the. Application materials submitted, I'll just I'll give a brief overview for the board. Um, the obviously have the application form itself was submitted for for both applications. The uh, uh, site plan as it was presented in to presented and and approved back in 2015 and 2016. Uh, was provided. I also went ahead and just printed those out, so we had a hard copy version if anybody wanted to view those tonight. Um, and so those were, as you know, submitted and approved back in back in 2016, and so you have them. For your reference along with these two applications as a part of the application materials. The the other things that were submitted were obviously the applicant, excuse me, the the site plan decision that was issued by the board at that time. Uh, for your reference, uh, and oh, yeah, Maria also provided a cover letter with what the ask was this time around. Um, and on the side of men's and Upton soccer, they provided a. Um, uh, I guess it was like a presentation of which included a lot of different information throughout. Um, that including cost breakdown, specs of light fixtures and poles. Uh, there was a lumineer schedule showing candle candle foot um, of the light fixtures on the field. Um, and again, obviously, I'll I'll drawing off of the same uh, plan that was approved back in 2016. So those are those are the materials that were submitted for the board's review. I don't I don't believe I'm missing anything, uh, but but let me let me know if I am.
Tommy, um, do you have any questions on this? You're the you have the institutional memory on this.
Unfortunately, I have. Uh, yeah, well, my first question, I guess, is on the the applications. One says the lighting is pretty clear that what it's for. But the second one.
But this is not the this is not the hearing. This is just scheduling a hearing. Should we be asking this kind of question before we have the hearing?
You mean, what's the application for? I think that's the perfect time to ask.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, no, that's 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 what I thought this was about, was to discuss whether the application was complete. And is there any question of the application before we before we get to the public area? That's why I wanted to turn it over to Tommy, because again, he has the the history on this and I'm flying blind here because I don't have internet.
So the first one says, the first one says additionally addition of lighting to the field and parking lot, pretty self explanatory. But the second one says upper parking lot project. What does that mean? Does that mean we're adding that in itself? Does it say it needs a site plan approval? If it's adding parking spots, then that's um, site plan approval, or if it's a change in use, that might be.
I think it was a change in the time that they're planning, because remember, we originally put time restrictions when we approved this last time around. We put very specific time restrictions on when that lot could be used, and I think this is proposing to change those time restrictions.
That makes sense. Is that is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And through through the chair, I had I'd asked Maria to provide, in addition to to what you see written there, the the cover letter. Um, and I'm I'm failing to be able to bring it up on my computer right now, but I believe the cover letter. Uh, when it's a little bit more detail as as far as what the ask was for for site plan, if that's acceptable to the board.
Yeah, generally, it's reading the application. I respond to that, so. Um, and my only my only comment of a lighting is, do we have a count as far as the the first ones of with the using the parking lot? That's really going to depend on our like the DPW for the roadway beside the Mill Road. Can that it traffic be okayed at those hours? At those times, it's not the winter time, it should be good, if you know, though.
Yeah.
But that is a, I think that is the one of the low grade roads. It's it's controlled. You can only go one direction at certain times. Bus can only go one way. So adding nighttime, even dusk with teenage drivers bothers me. I've had some. And so I would like to DP, I don't think we need to go outside. I don't think we need an outside engineer for for that. But for the lighting, I don't know if we have a town engineer or or anybody that can tell the neighbors that the the lighting is sufficient and not to bother them. So that's one thing I would suggest we go to peer review for the lighting to see, to recommend to the town. Um, whether or not that's that's the best thing for it. They might have a cheaper way. Anybody? Have any comments on that? Do we have a lighting expert?
Through through the chair, I'll I'll certainly reach out to DPW and and probably police as well for the the traffic question. That had a public hearing, a public hearing, so you'll have that information. Uh, as far as as far as reviewing a photometric plan and lumineers associated. Um, I don't know if we have anybody on staff who is is has that capacity, or as you say, expertise in order to stamp something to.
Right.
That 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 would hold up in court, um, as is what is the typical process. Uh, certainly, STAN Tech, your typical peer review would be able to easily review best that and provide provide you feedback.
Yeah, I don't want to waste the town's money, but um, uh, that's something that's appealable and insensitive. I think we should have a peer review on that.
So the the question I would pose to the board. Is is how you would like to to handle that? Typically, you have. Whoa, for for site plan, special permit, subdivision, whatever the application may be, when you go out to peer review, typically you have the applicant. Pay into an escrow account that that is then drawn from. Is that how you intended? Tom, you just said town spend money. Is that is that how you intend to proceed at this time?
The applicant is, you know.
Just just to weigh in, I think since that that was, I mean, even I know that and I was here and I wasn't, I go on this board 2016. Because lighting is a huge issue for neighbors, and so it seems to behoove recreation to be able to satisfy them. I mean, is this something that recreation could fund out of its own budget rather than going through the escrow and the that whole process? Because I'm looking at just.
Yeah, Kathy, I through the chair, I I would. I can talk to Maria about that as far as money available to provide for that, but I'll also, I can just get a quote from STAN Tech as far as far as what that would cost to to review. I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I can't imagine it's going to be astronomical. Uh, I mean, typically, when we get invoices for reviews, it's it's a thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there, but this would be a very limited view.
For the town that needs to review the exact.
I'll I'll, yeah, exactly. I'll thank you. I think you're hitting it, what I was just going to say, which is, I'll ask STAN Tech if they're going to do this pro bono. But uh, I'll anticipate getting a no on that answer, and then I'll 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 convene.
Because typically, we would say to an applicant, if you can't afford the application fee, are you going to build it?
Yeah.
But this is a different situation.
A different case, Tommy. Okay, are there any other questions or do we want to schedule the public hearings?
Well, I think we should schedule schedule two public hearings and either combine or put them back to back. We do have to vote.
Yeah.
But we do that on a if we have a site plan and a special permit. We might have two different votes on one project, so there shouldn't be any problem with putting them both together. Uh, that will help the the neighbors don't have to come to two meetings and do presentations.
Yeah.
Second, that patient for the lighting kind of dependent on the first one being approved, though.
Good question.
Because if you don't approve a time change, then there's no use for the lighting. So walk up. It's a it's a walk up to the lower parking lot. Well, so you can just park down below and still. But so the time change is just for the lot, not for the field?
Yeah.
But we were going to light the lot as well. I was going to not light the lot if.
Two lights on the lot, right, and six on the.
Yeah.
If the first one didn't get approved, we would not put the lights on the up the lot. Well, then we should, well, there are times we've approved of the site plan but denied the special permit, so we can still hold them together and the vote be the same. It will. That wouldn't be an issue for the seat. Does that make sense? Hold them, schedule them for a month from now? I think two weeks is going to be enough to everybody to respond. How about a month from now?
Yeah, saying a month from now, especially if we want, you know, STAN Tech or someone else to come in and take a look at the light. So that would be when the February.
Month from now is 13. Month from now is February 13th.
Okay.
I would move to hold the public hearings, uh, just 7:05, February 13.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay.
I asked a question, uh, because there was, you mentioned the application fee, so there's application fee for $500.
Thank you.
Um, so we are so amended up to use soccer nonprofit. We are willing to shell out, you know, seventy, eighty thousand dollars for the town. So I understand we could probably afford it. Is it something that folks here would want to waive? Or are you going to push us to pay this $500 application fee?
We've always waived the application fee, but we can't waive the outside cost. Because the the applications are used for the town to process your application. We can wait that. But if we have an outside independent reviewer.
So you're saying like the STAN Tech?
STAN Tech, that's going to cost some money and it can't get around it because that's our guarantee to the neighbors that we put you through the wringer and we did everything we could to make sure it was okay. That is.
I don't know if you've seen it, but we have done an analysis for you guys to review as well.
Yes, so the luminous deploy and. The poles don't go over the tree line.
Don't go over the tree line. It's, I mean, line sight is is zero.
Well, I think it's a great idea. When you get through with us, it should be okay. And and if we don't take our time and you get appealed, it's going to cost a town a lot of money and you get it in, so we can get you down here, you should be good.
Sounds interesting. Understood. Is this going to be the last? Outside thing we're going to have to pay for potentially?
Because now we've been doing this for a year.
Except for the, the planning board party agenda. Yeah, yeah, there's no, there's no increase in, in, there's no housing increase and there's nothing like that, so. Conservation commission issues. This, they're able to, it's pretty sad that they're on, it's going to be the same ones that we hear for the last meeting. I don't think anybody's changed. So it's going to be the same faces and same, so it shouldn't be that much.
And as far as notifying neighbors for the public hearing, is that on us, or is that? Maria, you.
Michael, take care of that.
So, yeah, through the, through the chair, the public hearing notifications. We were suggesting, as staff, we were suggesting to Maria that essentially Rick would take care of that for both applications. There's no sense in sending out two separate notices, because they're all going to go to the same people and it's, they're, obviously, they're very much tied together, even though they're two separate applications. So it makes sense to advertise and notice all through the rec. Again, assuming that's acceptable to the planning board, because that's your rules and regulations.
Through the chair, I, I have no problem having it combined for the butters list. It doesn't make any sense to make two of this the same butters list on the same night at the same public hearing.
Yeah. Agreed.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, are you in the middle of a, the middle of a motion and seconded?
I think.
I believe so.
No, I, I, I don't even think the motion was made.
Tommy made the motion for seven oh five.
Okay, oh, that, that, that's right, that's right. Okay, so seconded. Did anyone second?
Seconded. Yep.
Okay, so Margaret seconded it. Okay, now discussion. I do have a question. Um, the application fee. We, we, we can waive that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
And have we made a decision to waive that?
Well, we're in the middle of a motion to set the public hearing date. As soon as we do that, we can make a motion on that, yes.
Okay, okay. So that's not discussion on setting the date. Okay. So why don't we, so the motions are made and seconded. Any discussion on the meeting date? Okay, um, so all those in favor, hearing none, all those in favor, Tommy?
I.
We're talking, the, the motion is to schedule the public hearings in tandem on Tuesday, February thirteenth at seven oh five.
With one of butters list.
Yeah, and combined, okay. So with those two items, so Tommy, you vote yes, ten.
I.
Okay, Carol, I mean, Margaret, the.
I.
And Kathy is I unanimous. Okay.
And I, I would move that the planning board waive the application fee for the site plan applications. And and as well as the applicant is responsible for any engineering fees that are required for review.
Okay, I will second that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. Tommy?
I.
Ken?
I.
Margaret?
I.
And Kathy is unanimous. Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is Sylvan Springs, New Misco Springs request for a new covenant.
I'm done. Yeah, through, through the chair, before you, before you move on to the next agenda item.
Oh.
The, I'm, I'm just, for clarity, I just want to make sure that the board, in scheduling those public hearings and waiving the fee, the board has deemed the applications complete?
Yes.
I, yeah, I mean, I deferred that to Tommy and he deemed complete.
Okay.
The, the fact that we scheduled the public hearing. I figure it's a good indication that.
I, yeah, want to make sure. Just crossing Ts and dotting at it, that's all. Yeah. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Maria.
You. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, folks.
Well.
Okay, so next on the agenda is Sylvan Springs. Their request for the renewed covenant. Michael, can you?
Yeah, I would. Through, through the chair, I would request that the board table this item to the next meeting. I had reached out to Menden Planning Office and I was able to connect with their planner. I just have not heard back from their planning board as far as the, the questions we had outstanding for them before proceeding with the, the covenant. So it's, it's not a, this isn't a pressing matter, really. It's just, again, this is more dotting, dotting Ts and crossing Is.
For a minute, I thought you said dot Es, and I'm like, who dot?
I did. As intended as a joke.
Oh, you actually did say that, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I have no problem with that being tabled. Do we have to take a vote on tabling it?
No. Soon, thirty time.
No, you don't.
So when, when do you want to, when do you suggest we continue it too, Michael?
Oh, just the, I mean, you can table, formally continue it or anything. It's not, it's not like an application, but we can pop it on the next agenda. Hopefully, I can touch base with the the planner or representative from the planning board at that time.
Okay. Alrighty. All right. Um, so we can move on. Um, public, okay, uh, public meeting, one hundred and one Warren Street. This is a public meeting, not a public hearing. Previous applicant is adding a ground mounted satellite dish to cell tower, town of Upton Zone, okay. Is the, Michael, do you want to give a quick overview and is the applicant here?
Yes, please. We have, yeah, Shane McGowan's online. He's unmuted himself, Shane, if you want to say hi.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
So, um, this is, so, um, I think, I, I touched, I talked to the board about this, I think, last time. The, so what you have before you is there was a building permit poll to make some changes and modifications to, and we can defer to Shane to, to explain what it, what was exactly proposed. And I can pull up the, the plans if we need to look at them. But there was a, a change to, that was made or proposed to be made to the one hundred and one Warren Street Cell Tower. Per the, uh, per the existing bylaws on a wireless data transfer facilities. Each proposed construction of a new wireless data transfer facility tower, wireless data transfer device, or wireless data transfer accessory building shall require an initial special permit. Any extension in the height addition or addition of wireless data transfer accessory buildings or wireless data transfer devices to or replacement of any wireless transfer facility shall require an amendment to the special permit previously issued for that facility. So I believe in discussing this, that's, that's where we are as far as, you know, there was a, an, an addition of service to, to the cell tower. And so per the bylaws, that requires what is referred to as an amendment to the special permit. Kathy, I had emailed you and Paul about this, because I wanted to hammer out process on this. And there is no, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's no amendment to a special permit process that the, that Upton has defined locally. And so because of that, we are in a situation where you have to now define that process. And it was suggested to me through conversation with the town manager in his former life as a planner, just next door in Grafton, is that they had a similar situation and what they did is they did what we have tonight, which is a public meeting on it, so, so that the board can evaluate what is proposed in conjunction with what was originally approved. And the board can make a determination as to whether or not what is proposed is in keeping with the original approval of the special permit whereby you've then created the amendment to a special permit process. Again, that not being defined anywhere locally as far as amendment to a special permit. Now, in, in other cities and towns that I've worked for, there, there is a well-defined amendment to a special permit process which, you know, has its own application form and, you know, requires, may require notices and, and all that sort of stuff. But here, this is the, this was the recommended path forward. So I offered that to, to you, Madam Chair, and, and, and to Paul, just to get his input on it as well. You both, both agreed that that was a reasonable way forward in order to address this, 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 this issue.
And if I may, through the chair, this follows exactly our, is this a site plan originally, a site plan, correct?
It would tend to have been a site plan as well.
And, and regardless of whether it's a, a, a public meeting or whatever, if, it's a site plan and if it's a modification to the site plan and it's major, we would require a public hearing, a new public hearing. And if it's a minor site plan change, we, at this public meeting, we would say that it's a big minor change.
Sure.
There's no change in the intended use. There's no change in the purpose of the original.
Yep.
And this just needs to be documented and filed for however we do that.
Yeah, that's a.
But we would handle this the same way we handle any request for a change in a site plan, minor or major.
Okay.
It's minor, we decide that it's minor here and he's done. We just have to file a paperwork.
Sure.
And if we decide if it's major, we would say we need to schedule a, a site plan and it needs to be reviewed, but it, it does. Wouldn't that make sense?
Yeah, that makes total sense. Again, my thinking was, you know, tied to the, the language of the bylaw, because it was amendment to a special permit. But that, it does make sense to, to just default to the site plan procedures for, for addressing that matter. And I think, I think really, we're sort of on the same page for processing.
You're right.
You just defined it more clearly as, as being in the rules and regs, so that, that makes perfect sense. So then the task before the, the planning board tonight, that Tom, here, is that you then just have to make that determination, is this minor? Through the chair, and then through the chair, if you want, if you don't have any additional questions about process, we can throw to, throw to Shane and describe to us what, what is, what's going on.
It's in the same footprint?
Yeah, I don't have any additional questions on process. So I would like, I think Tommy sort of outlined it really well, but I'd like to go directly to Shane.
Yeah, as far as the site plan goes, this is a, an existing, I believe it's fifty foot by fifty foot fenced in. We call it a compound, so Dish is proposing to put their, their equipment inside that existing fenced area. So there's, there's no changes outside of that. Dish is proposing, it's a, it's a five by seven equipment platform that rests right on the grade, grade with modular feet. There's no concrete pad or anything. It, it let rest right on grade. And as, as far as the tower itself, it's, it's a hundred and forty feet in height, but Dish is proposing to be installed at a hundred feet. So there's, there's no extending the, the height of it, you know, there there's four existing wireless carriers on it now. Dish is going at the lowest, lowest height available on the tower.
So it's being added to the tower?
It's being added.
Separate.
It, it's a, a new platform and new antennas going on the existing tower.
I don't see this as being a major modification. I mean, it's consistent with, you know, the special permit that was granted. It's not adding any height, it's not adding any width, it's not really, it doesn't have a, it's, it's consistent with what the intent was. Thoughts from other members of the board?
I agree with you, Kathy. I don't think it's a big change.
All I've asked for is to give us the documentation so that we can file.
True. Uh, through, yeah, through the chair, I'll just coordinate with Shane to just get the, that site plan modification application and so we can, again, just catalog it appropriately with, for our records.
Okay. Does anything have to be signed, or do we just take a vote that we consider that's a lighter modification and?
We can take a vote now, or we can wait for our next meeting till Paul's back?
Is there any urgency in this, Shane, or wait till the next meeting?
Yeah, there is, there is some urgency on, on our end, but, you know, I, I understand.
Uh, through, through the chair, I would encourage the board, if I can be so bold, to, to take a vote tonight.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why we would wait for Paul on this, it's.
Only, only because there are FCC regulations that require the issuance of building permits for these things once they're submitted. Anyway, we're beyond that time limit. Shane and his, his crew have been really helpful and, and, and patient with us as we identified this, this issue with the building permits, because this is not something that I think that the town has, has captured before with these types of uses. And, and so, you know.
I would agree. Margaret, he would say he's a bankruptcy lawyer anyway. I would move that we consider this a minor change, not requiring a public hearing. And that the applicant submit the documentation to the town representing what he's doing.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, vote. Tommy?
I.
Ken?
I.
Margaret?
I.
And Kathy is an I. Okay. So.
Christmas came late. Christmas came late to Shane, is what I'm saying.
Thank you, Tommy.
So Shane and Mike, you just work on that and that's all we need, correct?
Yep, that's it.
All right. Thanks, Shandra. I really appreciate your, your patience with us working through this new process.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
Be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, planning board discussion or action items? Discussion on proposed overlay district on South Street to allow large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic installation project. Is Rick here, or actually, let's, do you want to just sort of update us, Michael?
Yeah, no, I don't believe Rick is here. I did reach out to him recently and just asked for, because he was supposed to follow up with a map of sometimes that would assist us in drawing those borders for proposed overlay discretion. So I just, I reached out to him for that. I, I haven't heard back yet. But that's, that's really where, that's all I'm really waiting for right now is to, is to get that information. And, and once, once we do, well, we, we can start crafting. Or I guess we can just go ahead and start crafting the, the, the language that'll be associated with it, with it now. I imagine the, now, we will meet again just before the warrant closes on the twenty-third, between now and then. What Grace and I will work on, as I volunteer her for work is, is, is getting a draft bylaw that, and it would be the board's preference that it mimics what we've been working on previously and only it'll just be restricted to this, to this area that will be narrowly defined.
Okay.
That's a question.
Well, I, I think it's, it's good for one side, the town is good for the other. I would limit it to one. If it's a good thing to do there, why isn't it a good thing to do on somewhere else in town?
Because we just got shot down at town meeting.
You think they'd approve just this one thing?
Yeah, yes.
A spot zone? We've never spot zoned except for municipal building. We spot zoned, put in the. We spot zoned, put in the, um, DPW, yeah, so we have done it in the past. And this is a spot zone that doesn't impact schools, police, or fire, and there's no increase in any of that, so it's probably a good thing to do.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, that will, will, will work on, will work off the existing language, really. Maybe we'll loosen, loosen up some of the requirements in that, because it'll be very specific to this property. And so maybe we'll lose some of the things that created a lot of unnecessary conversation at town meeting.
Especially if you get the nod in my backyard books that don't, but minded now.
But it won't be in their backyard this time, so.
That's right.
It's busy hanging on this guy's backyard, so.
Give an extra ten, twenty votes.
Okay.
All right, yeah, well, so Grace and I will work to have something in for review for next meeting, if only because I'll need to get something into the town manager for, uh, to, for a holdover for the warrant.
Okay. And can you ask Rick, just sort of give him a poke about the, um, the map?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, um, next item up was discussion on inclusionary zoning bylaw at the annual meeting. I would like to table this until the, this discussion, until the next meeting. We just had a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust, and this is their top priority, so I want to have the opportunity for them to, you know, members of that committee to weigh in on the importance of this, to reaching our affordable housing.
Sure, and then, yeah, Kath, and I already have, as the, as the board sigh sent out, there's, there's the draft language of inclusionary zoning, and it's, obviously, it's, it's, it's open-ended. I mean, there are certain things that need to be provided within that, because of what it is. But it is open-ended and can, and I'm sure will change, should the board decide to take this up as a matter. And with that, it's, it's as easy as just letting town manager know to hold a spot in the warrant for it, and so we'll have time to do that at the next meeting. Is inclusionary zoning synonym cheap housing? No.
No, it does, no, I, I mean, honestly, Tommy, I, I would like to continue this discussion till the next meeting. I'd like to, you know, because I, I really do want to give courtesy to the members of the Affordable Housing Trust to be here for that.
You got it, boss.
Thank you, sweet, oh, thank you, thank you, Thomas. The next thing, you're getting your lawsuit ready, aren't you? No. The next thing is discussion of bylaw change to allow accessory dwellings for annual town meeting from December. Okay, I mean, just, just in general, the Affordable Housing Trust also discussed accessory dwelling units. And we discussed how accessory dwelling units are affordable hous, like small A affordable housing, not capital A affordable housing, in that they don't necessarily increase, that, you know, they're, they're not geared towards increasing the town's subsidized housing inventory. They're aimed at providing affordable housing for folks. You know, so I don't know if folks want to discuss that tonight, whether we want to have a public hearing on it, or if we want to hold off on it. The, there was a presentation from someone from, from a woman from CMHC, um, CMHP, like, oh god, my brain is frying, I had two meetings in a row. From CMRPC, and she was going to be doing, um, sort of like a, you know, she's getting a grant to do a, a small workshop on how these have been applied, what they can do in to provide resources to potential applicants for it.
Okay.
For the, you know, for, for, you know, accessory dwellings. I don't, you know, so there's, there's a lot of moving parts in this. I do know from what she said that Grafton is considering it, and Mendon is considering it. So we would probably be clustered with them if it came to, you know, and the Affordable Housing Trust is going to write a letter to her expressing an interest in participating, you know, in, in the workshop that she's putting together. So any, do people want to discuss this tonight? Do we want to, I mean, what's, what's, what's the will of the board?
Why don't we discuss this when we talk about the other, the other bylaw that's going to be coming from the Affordable Housing Trust?
Okay. Okay.
I think this is a great, I think this is an idea for, because most people have, like I say, two acres. Most of the towns zone two acres, eighty thousand, so there should be enough room to put an attached, detached dwelling, accessory dwelling unit, for those that want to be close to the family, but not too close.
Yep. Yeah, I think there are also questions on how do you, you know, how do we structure it? I mean, do you want to have these, like, if, if a person, you know, wants to rent a unit out to a non-family member, is that going to be allowed? That would help them live in their house. If somebody can't afford, you know, the cost of their home anymore. So I think there's a lot of moving parts on ACUs, we want to restrict them to family members. You know, I think we've discussed in the past how, you know, the zoning board has made a career out of hearing these, because it seems that every meeting has one coming up, but right now they're restricted to family units. So, you know, how do we, I mean, there's a lot of thought that you go into this, and so maybe.
What do they do now with somebody that has an apartment, somebody that has a house, and has an illegal or an unapproved apartment in town? I mean, we know those exist, what's the penalty for that?
Well, we do. Um, I just, you know, I mean, and, and I'm not expressing a thought one way or the other on this. I'm just, you know, raising the issue, if we're talking about accessory dwelling units, do we want to just allow them, or do we want to restrict them to family members? You know, I mean, that's, that's something that we can consider, because it, it would help people stay in the houses, and it would have, you know, you know, allow for affordable houses. So, I mean, that's something for us to think about, if we push it to the next meeting, that might be something people want to mow over. You know, if there's any restrictions they want to put on this, Michael, is there a model ACU? I mean, ADU?
Yeah.
From another town you can send us?
Well, certainly, but I also think, Grace, didn't you find, I, I think there was a template ADU bylaw that was made available. I think, um, I think Pioneer Valley Planning Commission put that together. And so that's available for review, and then, obviously, Grace, Grace compiled a list of, actually, Tom was just looking at a, a variety of different bylaw options. But Kathy, I think, I think you're getting at really the heart of the matter, which is, at its core, what do you want it to look like? If you were to allow ADUs in town, what does that look like? I mean, the, the major components would be, uh, you know, attached or detached or both. Size limits, and then size limits depending on type and look and aesthetic. Meaning typically there's, and I think it's an recurrent bylaw of a language to the effect of needs to, needs to appear as though it is, is a part of the single-family use, right? So not, i- it, not meaning that if it's in the garage, that you need to make that house look like another house, in fact, the opposite. That if you're allowing it for in the det, for detached and then in a garage, that you don't do anything to that garage to make it look like you now have two separate dwelling units on the property. Those are sort of the, the, the parameters that you want to work with, and to, to strike a balance of protecting neighborhood character while still being flexible to allow for this different housing option to now come to town in a larger way.
One of the, one of the ways that I've looked at it is, it's a one-family zone. So if you're putting up another dwelling, it's for that one family. It's not a two-family zone. Is that another way to look at it? Because that would be anybody in your immediate family, your in-laws, your kids.
And what happens if your kids move out? You're stuck with this house? This is accessory dwelling?
You can't, you can't, you can't rent it?
And if you're telling me I'd object to someone that really needs a place to stay, and they're going to stay with someone that's responsible, wouldn't bother me a bit.
Well, no, I mean, I mean, to Tommy's point, they, they do have these, and I know for a fact that people are renting them. But I also know for a fact that it's a violation of the town's bylaws, you know, and I think to Tommy's point, no one cares. You know, if someone starts, like, renting it out as an air knob, then yeah, people would care, or air hub or whatever it is.
I, I think, though, if, if we're not clear on it, I hate to say this, but it, it opens the door for that future vendetta, right? I mean, how, how, how many meetings have we had about a certain driveway? You know, I think, I think there's the purpose for which something is built and how it ends up being used. So my neighbors up the street just built an accessory, I think, for the dad of one of them. But when they move on and they sell that apart, that, they sell that house, what is, what are the options for the person that buys that with that little little addition there?
Yeah. I mean, this might be something that folks, that we want to push off until the fall. You know, just a thought, because there are a lot of questions on it, and I think that we do need to reflect. But I guess, you know, maybe we should just push this off to the next, next meeting and, and, and think about it, review some of the documents. You know, the Affordable Housing Trust didn't see the same urgency on this one as they saw on the inclusionary zoning.
Can I ask a question? About, if it wasn't, if these dwellings weren't restricted to families, then would be counted as affordable housing?
Yeah, we just had discussion on affordable housing through the, through the chair. It's, and it's a great question, I wish they could be, and they can be. But unfortunately, because of the process that's required through the circuit to get units formally dedicated as affordable housing is so onerous, that there's just, from a prac, practical point of view, average homeowner is not going to go through that process with the state to get a deed into affordable housing and, and put onto the town's subsidized housing inventory list. Yeah, you'd be on a list, but then it's, it's just also too, it's just too much work for, to, for one person to do it for one unit, there's not going to be. There's no, there's no real incentive for them to do it, I think so. But, but it.
Affordable Housing Trust is often, has a need for both uppercase affordable housing and lowercase affordable housing. I mean, we need stuff for, you know, we need housing for people. You know, people's parents can't stay in town, people's kids can't stay in town, you know, it's just, you know, our teachers, our DPW workers can't live in town. I mean, it's just become onerous to live in this town, so we need, and, you know, the uppercase Affordable Housing Trust isn't, we've talked about this before, isn't necessarily affordable to regular folk. And so, you know, this doesn't, you know, the goal of accessory dwellings in the opinion of the Affordable Housing Trust is not to satisfy our 40B requirement. It's to allow people to live in Upton. But, you know, again, this is something I wouldn't mind putting off till the fall, till we have time to reflect on it. And to be able to, you know, take a thorough review and, of what other towns are doing, and what's happened if they've allowed non-family members to live in these dwellings. I mean, there's just a lot of questions. But we can discuss it more at the next meeting when members of the Affordable Housing Trust will be there. If that's okay with this board.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll just put that off until the twenty-third as well, that still gives us a chance to get it, you know, before the warrant closes. Okay, discussion to propose bylaw change. The, the, you know, the the, the wireless data transfer that both Lori and David Brooks are working on. What's the, you sort of gave a brief update on that earlier, Michael, what is the status of that?
Oh, sorry, I was emailing Stan Tech asking them for a free review.
That's our boy.
We have to discuss research and development.
Okay, but, but what was, what did we go on to first? What are we doing? What was the question, Kathy?
Yeah, wireless, where do we stand on?
Wireless. Okay, and then we'll go back to what Grace, Grace would have mentioned, that we just skipped an item, but then we'll go back to that, if you like. Wireless, uh, oh, yeah, yes, thank you, I, I did mention this previously. And so there's, there's, yeah, if you just want to continue this or table it to the next meeting, I'm continuing to work with David Brooks and Lori Woden to, to put together a, an agreeable draft bylaw for you to review that you as the board. So that, but there's nothing new to present on it tonight. I, I met with them last week, I think it was, and we sat through it and went through things kind of word by word. And so I scheduled, we scheduled another meeting to, I think, in maybe like two weeks to, to then go through it again. And we should probably have something probably for the next meeting. It's, what's the board's sense of, the question I'll ask the board is, what's your sense of this? I, I, I know Lori would love to get something done for a town meeting for, for May. But, uh, do, does the board think we can get this on for May, or should we just, you know, I'm happy to obviously work with them until the fall on it, it's, 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 it's not an issue as far as timeline from my perspective.
Is, you know, since, just a question, since 5G is not something that's going to be knocking at Upton's door in the next year or two, is that something that Lori would be amenable to, is putting it off till the fall town meeting?
That's a good point, I'll have to run that by her.
Yeah, yeah, because I.
You don't have to answer to it tonight.
I would like to see those two come together on something.
Yeah.
Because if those two can agree on something, you know, you have two smart people that, you know, reflect different opinions on this. And I, I just think that, you know, their willingness to work together, I, you know, I, I think that that's huge.
I was encouraged at our meeting, so, I mean, it lasted a long time, so that's going to, that's going to count for something.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So, yeah, through the chair, if you wouldn't mind continuing it or tabling it.
Why don't you give us an, an update at the next meeting, and, you know, if, you know, about what's going on? And if, you know, there's a push to get it on, and there's a push to get it on.
Absolutely, all right, I'll be in contact with you in the meantime about it.
Yeah, I mean, my preference at this point, if they're not in agreement to hold off till fall, if they haven't been able to come up with, but otherwise, you know, that, that's beyond our control.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on that, or are we?
Sounds good.
So the thing I missed was discussion on research and development bylaw, and you'll tell me.
Yeah, just, uh, through the, through the chair, this is something I, I was bringing to the board from EDC. We, we ran out of time last meeting to, to, to discuss this one. The, the impetus of this was, I, I was contacted by someone doing due diligence for the potential location of a research and development lab in central Massachusetts. So they were calling all the towns to say, hey, what's your zoning for something like this? And I was initially encouraged, I was like, oh. And I was initially encouraged. I was like, oh, I think, I think we got something on this and we, we don't. So we know, we don't have anything on it. The, which is peculiar, 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 I'll say, even though I can't say it. Is a, it's a pretty standard use to see in the use table is research and development labs or just laboratories generally. We don't, the town doesn't list this at all as use tape. And so be granted, if you don't want it anywhere in town, then that's probably a good thing to do. But if you, if, I mean, certainly the economic development committee would like to have this on the use table, which is why it's being brought up. Which is, you know, there's, there's, there's interest in this type of use, especially in Massachusetts and especially beyond 495 nowadays for obvious real estate reasons. And so in order to be able to potentially capitalize on future commercial tax dollars is to, is to provide for zoning for something like this.
That's your question. Wouldn't the first thing actually put it in there with all those? Then you'd have made it easier after that.
I, that's exactly.
Should we put it in?
Yeah.
Put it in with special permit in CNI or something? Make some.
I mean, we don't have the process for them to follow. Yeah, there's no process right now. I, I would agree and I would offer it to the board with, with, with Margaret, which is, yeah, special permit. Yeah. I don't think you'd want to put something like that by right, especially immediately through town meeting, special permit. And then obviously, obviously it would trigger site plan no matter what it was. You know, it would hit almost every threshold, I'm sure for, for site plan review. So it'd come through this board regardless. But that, that would certainly make sense to CNI district or something like that.
The only thought I have is that I think that there's a, would be an issue. I mean, certain people may have an issue with it. Because when you're talking about R and D, you might be talking about, you know, bio. I'm not sure what the term is, but you know, might be looking at, looking at different biological constructs, correct?
Well, yeah. So you might be, there might be biohazards, but there's, there's ways to deal with that. I don't, I don't think, I mean, it's not like they're going to be pouring stuff out in the backyard, right?
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that I have concerns about it. I'm just saying that it's, it might be an issue for people.
Well, yeah. So they can raise concerns.
It's already raised at the EDC from, from a member. And so, yeah, I mean, you, we could, we could also go through the practice of defining laboratories as acceptable in town, right? Now, I'm not, I'm not super, you know, immediately comfortable differentiating between types of laboratories and research and development, but I'm sure, I'm sure definitions exist on, on types and, and what it would look like and that we could potentially exclude certain activities. But I don't, you know, I don't really see the reason for it other than it, it, you know, it, it, it might not jive with people's sensibilities. But there you have it.
Yeah. I mean, I, you could, you could, you could live in it so that you don't allow like biohazard level four or, or biological level four facilities or biological containment level four facilities, you know, but below that.
No, Margaret, are you talking about a?
I'm sorry. Am I talking about what?
Are you talking about a bylaw or are you talking about a special permit?
I, I, we, we could put within, if we wanted, if we're, if there are people that are concerned, then we could put within the bylaw that, that, you know, there, you can't, no one's going to come out here with a level four facility because they're going to want to be near a major university and we're not.
No, we'll get a nuclear reactor while we're at it. Yeah. Okay. No, I, I, I agree. I don't, I don't have a problem with that one.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll work with the EDC to, to, to draft something to, to provide to the planning board. And I'll, I'll certainly be talking to Margaret about it since she knows way more about this, this realm than I do.
I was thinking the same thing when you're talking level four. It's like, I'll shut up now. Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Oh, I always forget that I have a brother who's a scientist who works at Eli Lilly. He might know things too.
He might know something. Yeah.
They'll talk to you.
We'll see. So that was it.
So, so, so what do we, what do we want to do on this? Do we want to?
I'll work to get the board a, something in draft form at a future meeting. No reason to, I mean, just because we're already doing so much bylaw work to get ready for annual meeting at this point. I don't, I don't see this happening for May. But in the meantime, I'll, I'll just, it'll, it'll be a, there'll be a project that I'm working on and I'll, I'll provide it to the board sometime in the future.
Okay. Does anyone have any, does anyone have a sense of urgency that we need to pass this at annual or?
I don't think there's a sense of urgency. I mean, I highly doubt the, the, the lab that reached out to me is going to look at Upton now. So.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So next item on the, is there any more discussion on this? Do you want to move to the next item on the agenda? Which is discussion of MBTA community compliance. Okay, Michael?
All right. So, um, did I, I think I forwarded everybody, yes, I did, the draft, I put together draft bylaw for the MBTA community bylaw we are required to have. And so that, and obviously we're, we're not rushing with this either because I, I need more input from consultants and such. But, so that's just an idea of what it will likely look like as far as bylaw language. Certain things may move and change. The, the biggest gaps in it right now are the dimensional requirements because we are unsure of what that'll look like. You know, the dimensional requirements will obviously play a large part in the density requirement for the, for the district. And so when we're narrowing down on locations, that playing around with those dimensional numbers will, will kind of make or break us as far as compliance. So that'll just be left open for now. And we can get into the weeds of that discussion a little, a little later, once we have a consultant onboard. The, so that's for your review. I don't, I don't anticipate obviously going into a detailed discussion about the, the draft bylaw at this point. It's, it's, it's modeled after the state model. The, the other, the thing I did want to bring to the board's attention and for a potential discussion i- if you'd like. And then I was also going to offer to bring this to EDC for their discussion because I also know that they want to be included in this effort. And that is the location. I had reached out to Jeff Roloff's for Governor's Landing and asked if he and his client would be interested in locating the MBTA community district along the front side of that project essentially. It's, would be the general business district as that, that strip of, of a zoning district that runs along 140. That portion of that district on that site would be pretty much the size that the town would need to adopt per the state's requirements, right? So we need something like, I think it was 10 acres, 10 or 15 acres. We need 15, 15 units per acre. So. So anyway, so obviously they were interested because it would have, it, it potentially would increase their ability to, to provide more density within their, their development. So that is an option. It's obviously not locked in. I didn't make any promises to anybody because that needs to go through this board.
And just as a comment or a question, when you spoke with Jeff, he, you did bring up the topic of inclusionary zoning and the possibility that he would need to put a certain amount of affordable there and he was okay with that, correct?
Yes. Yeah. And, and, and again, because it would be, it would be increasing, I imagine the profitability of that site, right? So you're raising the, anyway, I don't need to get into the, the details of whatever pro forma that they're working with, but the long and short of it is, is yeah, they're, they're, they're of the understanding that if, if the town is going, going to be increasing density, especially on their site, that they'd have to provide some sort of inclusionary zoning along with it. So, yeah. But I, so, so again, what I've been doing is working with CMRPC with the compliance model that I think I sent out a while ago for everybody's review. Just as, just to get a sense of what it is that, that I'm looking at. And so I've been working with CMRPC as, you know, just playing around with different potential locations in town for this district. And so start, I started out with really a lot of space. There was, I think the Sarkisian property and then also Cook property down towards the Hope Dale side. There was obviously then a large portion of 140 stretching down. And then also the Upton Center Business District, which is essentially a village district, seemed like a great opportunity to provide for some infill housing pursuant to this, the statue. I think that was it. Oh, and then, then we also played around a little bit with the Hartford Ave Warren Street property that's behind, behind the, the apartments there, the Cotro Apartments.
It's called Pleasant Woods. Yeah.
Yeah. What's going on there?
Nothing's going on there right now. It's just, it's, it's, it is currently that property is in the conservation restriction. So.
I thought there was, they were clearing land last night. So.
Behind Cotro.
Commission expressed an interest or a willingness to do an exchange. A certain sum of the land in exchange for land that's, you know, for, for, for other land because they, they can do a trade. So other town owned land. You know, but there's, but there's a question of either, that's something the Affordable Housing Trust is going to look at is what the buildability of that site is because it's a lot of ledge.
Yeah. And anyway, so that ended up not even being an option. So I'll just get right to that because it is in conservation restriction. So the state would look at that and say, this doesn't qualify as an MBTA community site because it's under a conservation restriction. So you can't actually build on it. And so we need, we need to provide to the state obviously realistic choices. So even though, even though housing production plan did identify that as a potential site for the future and would like to work with the conservation commission for removing that restriction, even though there's, you know, the stated good intentions as far as that, the state's going to look at and say, yeah, but the, the restriction is still in place. So it's no good. So I, I guess, so what I'd be looking for from the board tonight, if you can give me a little bit of direction on, on how you feel about these different locations. And obviously I'm, I'm pushing a little bit towards the Governor's Landing site and I'll explain myself about that now, which is the issue with MBTA compliance is that it is dizzying. The, the, that compliance model that the state pumped out that requires us to fill in every little detail about a potential site. I mean, yeah, it makes you go cross-eyed, but then after it makes you go cross-eyed, it spits out a number and tells you how many units that you could potentially develop under the zoning that you just proposed. And if we're, if, if the town puts in anything beyond really the minimum of the 10 or 15 acres that, that, that you have to provide in order to comply, it's going to spit out a number of like potentially, I'll, and I'll just be ridiculous, 14,000 new dwelling units you just potentially created. Right? If you're put, if you're putting things on like, so like take, take, I think it's the Sarkisian property, maybe. One of them is like 80 acres and it was something that was discussed through housing production plan as, hey, this would be a great site to try and get housing, affordable housing on. It's, it's, it's a site that's privately owned that could be coming out into the market sometime in the near future. We could work with it. We think it'd be a good site. Great. Wonderful. Even, and even if you were to take the entirety of the Upton Center Business District, which in, in my opinion, as a planner, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a center village district. It is for planning purposes, that's where you would want infill housing in order to support any sort of new business that you'd want to develop there. Yeah. Great. Grand. Problem is, is that again, it's beyond like 20 acres total of a site. And so when you put it into the compliance model, it spits out a wild number. And I would just, I'd be very concerned about bringing that to town meeting, right? I don't, I don't want to really put people on edge as far as what are you, and I, and I apologize, I don't mean to speak on half of the board on, on making these sorts of calls, but it's, I, I just, I want to help guide the board to being successful in, in passing a, a, a new district or, and a new bylaw. So that's why I was leaning towards the, the Governor's Landing site as being it, the sort of small, narrow, very specific piece of land that's already slated for some sort of density, which obviously has sewer, water and, and all those sorts of things. So I'll, I'll, I'll shut up and if the board wants to provide me any comments, I'd be glad to take it.
Well, let me ask a question. Are we having this discussion, a full discussion on this topic now? Or I, what are, what are your next steps? Do you want to?
I would guess, I guess, if, if anybody had any sort of initial feedback, that'd be great. But otherwise I would just ask the board if you're okay with me bringing this discussion, as I just explained, it really to the EDC and maybe letting EDC give the planning board a recommendation for a citing of the zone. And I offer that again, only because EDC would really like to be involved in this process.
I mean, you and I discussed the Governor's Landing a while ago and I thought that was a great option because it's very defined and it's a place that's slated for development anyway. And so it's not going to bring, you know, and it, and it, and it complies. So it's not, it's not doing a crap shoot and saying, gee, is somebody really going to build here? What are they going to build here? I, I, I think it's, it's a very neat, easy solution. So I, I, you know, if you're looking for thoughts, that, that, that would be my thought is I, I, I kind of like that one.
Do they get a break on water and sewage?
Do they get a break on? I don't, not through this process.
So those, each one of those units who take water and sewage, if these?
Yeah.
In spot work. It's some general business, but through the zoning board, they've made it into a residential area.
Right.
Both sides of the street.
Yeah.
In this spot.
And, and, and in all sense, you've already lost that as commercial.
And, and, and in all honesty, that's not because of the way traffic flows through there. It's really not good GB land anyway, right? You're not going to put, someone wasn't going to build a doctor's office on that street for people to pull in and out of.
Yeah. With only a five foot depth, you're not going to get any kind of a retail store.
Yeah.
Or anything like that. There's not enough depth.
So I'm, I'm, I think that that's probably the best solution for us to look at right now. I, I agree with you.
No objections.
All right. Wonderful. So I'll, I'll continue that conversation with the EDC. And I'll, I'll obviously continue to work on, you know, work on things with CMRPC. As I mentioned earlier, I just got two bids for technical assistance for this. work on things with CMRPSC. As I mentioned earlier, I just got two bids for technical assistance for this finally. So I think we can probably discuss that at the next meeting as well.
Okay. And, and when do we have to comply by?
December of 2025.
Okay, that's what I thought. It wasn't this year, it was next year. Okay, so we've got lots of time to play.
If, if possible, start to run smoothly and, and this board is, is obviously on, on board. I'd love to try to get something before town meeting as early as the fall. So we take at least one swing at it. So if it fails, you know, we'll have some time to refruit.
Yeah. No, that, that, that makes sense. Okay. Okay, so the next seeing, are there any other things to discuss on this? Or do you want to move to the final item, which is discussion on Milford Street Route 140 culvert replacement?
So you just got notification of, of, of this because they are, I've been going through CONCON right now. And so Tom had emailed me earlier about if there's a plan for, for the brewery for parking, if it's going to interrupt their parking and access to them. And so I just spoke with Joe, actually during the Affordable Housing Trust meeting, and asked them about that plan. And so he described it as it'll be happening in phases. And so the, they'll, they'll, they'll construct the pedestrian bridge first. And while that is going on and there's, traffic will be redirected, there will be an opportunity for the brewery to utilize the parking at the Rustine Building because they're not, nobody actually currently uses that for overpool parking, but it'll, it'll be available to them. It's right across the street. It won't shut down their parking lot, the, the park, a little bit of parking that they also have. And then and then once that is complete, once the pedestrian portion is complete, there will be the opportunity to then park on the, the other municipal lot while they're working on the bridge, the rest of the bridge. And so obviously you won't be able to drive over the bridge, but you're going to be able to park at the municipal lot and walk over to, to the brewery if, if you want to.
Yeah, I have, I have a question, Michael. This, this agenda item, was that the, I thought the 140 culvert, the one at the bottom of the culvert. I, I didn't think this was Grove Street Bridge. I thought it was the
Oh, I'm sorry. I started talking about Grove Street. Is this a different one?
Just on your schedule.
Following the gender, I remember getting on the
Yeah, I'm getting my infrastructure. I don't, this is, this was just a notice to the, to the planning board. So there's really, I, I wasted time talking because this is just, this is just a notice. You don't need to discuss it if you don't want to. I don't think there's any action before
They let us know in case we have any projects that we're working on in that area. We have to let that applicant know, the, the project know that that's going to happen in their area. I don't think we have anything going on and then, you know.
We do not.
I guess the only reason they let us know.
But I, I do have a question. When they're putting the sewers up 140, that's going to crisscross with this though, correct?
Uh, yeah, I imagine the sewers will intersect with this.
Okay.
I don't know, I, I have a plan right now, so I don't know how far down this culvert is, but
Yeah, okay.
But that shouldn't, that shouldn't be an issue. Anyway.
I'm going to take Paul's role tonight. I haven't had my chicken soup yet, so can I cook my chicken soup? Can we, can we adjourn?
Yes.
Okay. And for all you guys that are there, you know, be safe driving home. My daughter said the driving is kind of treacherous.
Chairman, cut speeding to order.
And, and, and Tommy, as much as you and I fight, I don't want anything to happen to you. So, okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, second? All in favor, A, B, C, D, N. Bye-bye.
All right, good night.